Here.
Wanda, here. John.
Here. Next item on the agenda is financial conflict of interest. We'll start with Wanda.
Um, I do not.
I do not. I do not?
I do not.
I do not.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda for this evening.
I would move to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan. Any further commission conversation? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda is approved. Next item, public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against members of this body, county staff, individuals, or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. First item on the agenda at six oh five is canvassing of the 2024 primary election.
You gonna do public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we will do public comment at this time. Okay, I have Ed Van Durpin. He requested to be the, at the end of the public comment. Is that correct? The second public comment. Louis Johnson.
Louis Johnson, following. Uh, I guess the thing I've been pondering lately is what is the role of government? Uh, my idea of government, I guess, is schools, police protection, and roads and bridges. And I realize that I'm probably in a group of one that feels that way, but it seems like everybody else thinks the government is supposed to protect them from absolutely everything that's out there. We have to have this, we have to have that, we need to have a place for this, a place for that. Taxpayers can pay for it because it will benefit everyone. I think they're losing sight. But what's going on? I don't know if you guys caught it in the news this morning, but government spending is one of the leading causes of inflation in this country. So why isn't we have to give everything to everybody to make them happy? Because they're not gonna be happy. And personally, I think some more could be spent on roads and bridges. But I just kinda wonder where, where does it end? You know, we have all of these great, and I'm not gonna say these projects are bad, they're stupid, they're dumb. But why do they have to have the government involved? If it's a great idea, private business should be able to make it work. And I'm also a firm believer in the county could probably save a ton of money if they hired an efficiency expert, but that's my opinion. And I just don't understand why we, we have a tax now for the museum, so we're planning for the past, which is coming good out. But why don't we turn things a little bit? Why does government have to make everything so difficult? And it's, you get a special interest group in and they get everybody revved up and worried and five years later you find out none of the things they said would happen, happened. But in the meantime, government stepped in and took care of that problem right away and eliminated a lot of expansion and growth. I'm a firm believer in less government is better. Thank you.
Thanks, Louis. Next, next name on the, Steve Rolcar. I seen him just a minute ago.
Yeah, he's here, I see.
There he is. He changed seats. Please come to the speaker, to the microphone and state your name and address and, and you have three minutes.
Okay, uh, I'm kinda lost. I didn't know I was supposed to speak today.
Did somebody sign you up on accident?
Your name is on the, on the public comment list.
Is that right? Okay, um.
Somebody must have wanted you to speak.
Evidently, uh, the only thing I can say, I guess, is, uh, I'm supposed to be at the meeting here and, uh, that didn't happen because when we adopted bylaws, uh, the, uh, everybody, or the, uh, what am I trying to say here? The people in here that are running the meeting up there decided that we shouldn't come. And I'm working right now with the group of people and we're gonna get accepted in, I think, tomorrow, so I'm going to here tomorrow to represent the county. And I think it's egregious that they took our votes away, uh, just because we passed a, um, we passed a bylaws document. So, uh, that's all I have.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, John Dursel?
Yes, sir.
I hope I didn't, I hope I didn't ruin your, uh, pronunciation of your last name.
You pronounce it very good. The other version is a D with an apostrophe. That's what's the original. My name's John Dursel. I live in Yankton in an apartment and, uh, on Eighth Street. And I wanted to thank the county commissioners and the county of Yankton, uh, for what they do for people who might be struck unexpectedly with a serious illness or something like that and what they do for the elderly. I wanted to thank them. Also, and I think I'm echoing the words of a lot of people that live in Yankton County, appreciation for the drug and alcohol court. They had a graduation yesterday and, uh, I know a young man, it gave him a lot of motivation. He's got about six months and that gave him a lot of motivation to continue. So I think in terms of the many DUIs, uh, it's gonna be helpful. But I just wanted to thank the county commission for what you do and thank the state's attorney as well. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Okay, that's all the list of people that we have on our public comment list for right now. Next item on the agenda is the canvassing of the 2024 primary election. I would need a motion to approve that.
Do you wanna look in and make sure? I have looked at it. I heard it happening. I guess I would move to approve the detailed results that we have, uh, by, by precinct.
Uh, that would, that would be fine, Dan.
Well, Patty, you looked at the study when I, when I got it, huh?
No, cuz I have to send it to the state right away.
Okay. I'll just, I'll just, you know, that, uh, I'm not present and I don't have, I don't know the, what is the reason that I, uh, signed it and, and vote on this petition or anything.
Thanks, Dan. So I have a motion by Wanda.
I'll second.
Second by Ryan to approve the 2024, uh, primary election canvas. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. With one extension of Dan.
Okay, um, I need, I have two copies.
We didn't sign it yet.
Yep.
Next item, draw, draw vote center for post-election audit. You wanna explain that to the public?
We'll have, we're gonna have a turn of mic on. Um, June 20th, we are going to have a post-election audit. We're gonna, um, select one vote center and we have to audit the federal race for president, Democrat president, and we will pick from, um, the, the state senate race, our, the state representative race. Here it is. Lewis and Clark. Listerville. Mayfield. Fire Station. Yankton City Hall.
Yeah, Lesterville.
Our, and here's for the state senator and state representative.
Play for the state senator.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. Is the absentee ballot not considered its own?
No, I don't have to do the absentee vote.
Okay.
Uh, this means, uh, Lewis and Clark, recreational area.
Oh, I shouldn't sit alone. Representative?
Need the, just the two, right?
And state senator.
It'll be state senator.
Can you make the motion? Let's just set it in stall.
Um, you can, we'll have a motion to approve the, um, Listerville Vote Center and we'll be auditing the federal Democratic President and, uh, the state senate race.
So moved.
Yeah, motion by Ryan, second by Wanda, to approve the slate that you have announced. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Dana and Ann from, uh, Yankton County, Yankton Library.
Hi, thanks for having me, having us here tonight. Um, I just kinda wanted to give you guys a little update on what we have going on. We just kicked off summer reading this week and it's been a busy week. Uh, we had our party in the park was kind of our kickoff event this week in Memorial Park. I don't know if any of you guys were able to make it there, but, um, we had a petting zoo and, uh, a show with wildlife animals for kids and we had some park activities and food there and we just had, we had a great crowd. It was four thirty to seven thirty, um, and we estimated like five to six hundred people at least, uh, there throughout the night. So, um, we're excited for that. Last night we had our cemetery walk. It's our eleventh annual, um, cemetery walk and we sold out all of our tickets for that. So we had, um, I think a hundred thirty-four people that came through last night and that's a partnership with the Me Museum. So, um, something that continues to be popular. I gave, um, the commissioners, I gave you guys all a packet that had some stats and information from last year, um, but just to kinda give you guys a little, you know, a quick little snippet of some of the stats that we have. Last year in 2023, we had a hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred sixteen checkouts at the library, um, and a hundred five thousand, nine hundred fifty of those were physical items with about thirty thousand of those being digital. So, you know, when people say we have eBooks now and are people really reading? Yes, they still are reading, um, physical books and checking those out from the library. We have nine, nine thousand hours of people using our Wi-Fi, um, over six thousand people, six thousand, six hundred uses of our computers. Uh, we put on four hundred eighty-three programs last year and had over ten thousand people attending, so, um, you know, math is, is not my strongest suit, but that's more than one program a day if you do that. So, um, anyway, just kinda give you a snippet of really how many people we have through the door and some of the different things that we've been doing. Um, I did include in the little packet I gave you a summer reading calendar and we have ninety, ninety-three programs on the calendar for June and July, so that keeps us very busy, but, um, already this week we've just had a lot of people through the door and I'm just a very strong believer in that you can learn in many different ways and I think the library is a great place to bring people together to do that. So we're excited for another summer reading program. Um, and then kind of the last thing I wanted to talk to you about was a little foundation update. So the library, Inkton Community Library Foundation, it's in the midst of their feasibility study and so everybody, they did kinda change the, um, format of how they were gonna do the survey and they decided to send out a postcard to everybody in Inkton County. So hopefully everybody has gotten a survey and then, or a postcard and then a reminder about that. So that survey closes this Friday, so if you haven't done it yet, please do. We wanna hear from everybody, whether you use the library or not. We're looking forward to hearing that and, um, just getting as many responses as possible. So really exciting news about that is when, um, they put this survey out, she said that they were hoping to get four hundred responses back and so far we have over thirteen hundred responses. So it, I mean, we've had a good response rate so far, so we're excited about just the number of people that have responded to it. So, um, again, that closes on Friday. We do have paper copies at the library, so if you want to, um, stop in and pick up a paper copy, you can do that, but Friday is the last day. So, um, just, that's the information that I have for you, but if you guys have any questions, I just kinda wanted to come and give you an update on what we had going on.
Hey, thanks, Dana. Any questions for Dana? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, state's attorney is up with the interpreter service. Do you wanna explain that to the public?
I'm Larson, Yankton County Deputy State's Attorney. So as the board is aware, Inkton County pays indigent costs for criminal cases and some other civil proceedings in Yankton County. Among those services that also have to be provided are interpreter sessions for people that do not speak English, that are facing criminal charges and/or have simple, um, process hearings in Yankton County. We all have a, uh, our form, our sheet that we prepared for today outlining the different types of actions that the interpreter will be needed for. As of right now, there's two ways to go about having interpreters available in court. We can use a telephone line through certified languages or we can, and we do currently contracts with LSS that bring in an in-person interpreter. Issues that are being found right now are that defense attorneys are having trouble getting interpreters lined up when they need to meet with their clients outside of a court setting such as office meetings or in the jail. And so we are proposing in this streamlined type of proposal that the, the county approve this process for, uh, setting up interpreter sessions in Yankton County. For the certified languages, telephone lines, the county will set up an account that, a code for that interpreter session would be given to the court-appointed attorney or the attorney that has a court-appointed client. And then that person would then be able to have phone contact with an interpreter to interpret sessions for their client. Secondly, if that doesn't work, we could also have the attorney find and use their preferred interpreter. However, interpreters range in cost, so we wanna set a cap of the allowable amount that the county will pay for. And that's outlined in your sheet there as well. And so those are the, pretty much, the reasons for our request. We are seeing an increase in interpreter sessions in Yankton County. We do have, uh, special days assigned just for interpreter sessions. And so we do believe it's an asset that will be needed here in the future. So if you guys have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, that's our proposal that's outlined.
What do you ask me, the annual budget, like, for this?
Hard to say. It goes up every year. I know since I started in 2020, we've had a steady increase every year. I can't say what we have spent on. Haven't talked to Kathy yet. I don't know if Patty has a general idea of what we've spent on, but I believe interpreter sessions are a dollar twenty-five a minute via the phone. I believe seventy-five dollars an hour is appropriate for the in-person session as well. But I cannot say what we've been spending. I have not looked at the number.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Dan.
Um, the question is, I mean, does our legal percentage of the, uh, what would you say, um, in their legal number, or should?
I don't think I can answer that cuz I don't know legal status of defendants.
But I mean, the, the reality is that, you know, the consequences of the failed order policy are the detriment of citizens in Yankton County. And, um, I just wanted to make that point, so, thank you.
Any other questions for Tyler?
No, but as somebody who has had the opportunity to be in court with a Spanish-speaking, uh, non-English-speaking individual, it makes it extremely difficult if you have to have the, if you don't have the real-time interpreter, somebody who will sit there and say just exactly what I'm saying now, um, because I bought headsets now and my microphones, um, because otherwise it would be, I would make a short statement and then the interpreter says that. And then I'd make another short, short statement and then the, and it takes twice as long to get through court when you do it that way.
You're saying by phone?
I'm saying by phone. It, it's way better when you have the.
Person sitting.
Person sitting right there and sitting at the same table and talking. So I would move to approve what I call the amended version of the, um, proposal, having deleted the words attorneys and fees and in, and interlinated the word interpreters. And on the fourth, our third bullet point down where it says civil actions, I think it needs to say limited civil actions so that, uh, non-English-speaking people do not think that the county's gonna pay for their divorce or their eviction or their protection order hearing.
Okay, I have a motion by Wanda.
I'll second.
Second by Ryan to approve the Inkton County Guidelines for Interpreter Services with the amended, noted amendments. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
I agree, aye.
Which aye? Aye, yes, or?
First item.
Okay.
So what's my?
So three, two.
Three, two.
Set to.
Sorry, that was me. Contact center discussion Rebecca was not able to make it this evening, so we'll skip past that. Wind power discussion, Nexter Energy. You gentlemen are up for agenda item.
Mr. Chair, uh, this is Chris, or?
This is Andrew.
Do I limit, uh, what they need to do or, you know?
I think, I think I'll give them fifteen, right, I think I'll give them fifteen, twenty minutes to explain what they want to and if they can wrap it up sooner than that, it would be greatly appreciated.
That's very, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, uh, good evening. My name is Gokhan Andy. I'm a project director with, uh, Nexter Energy Resources. We are here today to give. Technically, uh, we are here today to give you an overview of, uh, Nexter Energy Resources and, uh, provide, uh, information about the Swan Lake wind project. Uh, again, I'm a project director with Nexter Energy Resources. I, uh, I, I'm local. I live in, uh, in Sioux Falls. Uh, I'm, I'm an engineer. I've been, uh, I worked as a city engineer for seven years and I've been in the energy industry for the, working in the energy industry for the last twenty years. Before I start, I'd like to introduce, uh, the presenters today. I'm the developer, uh, responsible for the Swan Lake Wind Project. Uh, I have here today Jill Seed, uh, our environmental manager, uh, working again on the Swan Lake Wind Project. We also have third-party experts. Uh, Dr. Chris Olson is an environmental, public, and health safety expert. We also have, uh, Alan Anderson, uh, he's the Energy Practice Group Chair of Olson Alley. He's also a professor at the University of Kansas School of Law. Nexter Energy Resources is, uh, world's largest generator of renewable energy from, uh, the wind and sun. As a matter of fact, we have one hundred and forty-seven operating wind energy projects through, in forty-one states, uh, in the country, uh, and, uh, over twelve thousand operating wind turbines. Uh, we have, uh, uh, twenty years of renewable energy, uh, uh, project execution history. So, uh, what we develop, we construct, we own and operate these projects through the life of that project, which is, you know, twenty to thirty years. We have it in the region, uh, over twenty years now. In the state of South Dakota, Nexter Energy Resources has invested, uh, over eight hundred and thirty, uh, eight hundred and thirty-six million dollars. We own and operate four wind energy centers, uh, Crown Ridge Wind, Day County Wind, Day County, South Dakota Wind, and West, Westington Springs Wind Project. We are also developing the Swan Lake Wind Project and we also are, uh, working on two battery storage projects, Crown Ridge One and Crown Ridge Two, uh, uh, battery storage projects. Benefits of our, uh, you know, energy investments in the state of South Dakota, approximately two point one million dollars in landowner payments annually, more than four point nine million dollars in payroll, uh, again, annually, and almost two point one million dollars in property taxes. Again, in the region, in the state of North Dakota, uh, we have been investing since two thousand and three, uh, over twenty years now. We own and operate fifteen wind energy centers and, uh, developed in five energy, five additional wind, wind energy projects, New Salem One and Two, Alvo Four, Prairie Wind, and Red Bud, uh, Wind Projects. Again, benefits of our energy investments in the state of North Dakota, again, annually, approximately eight point five million dollars in land payments, more than twenty-four million dollars in payroll, and almost five point nine million dollars in property taxes.
And I have a quick, uh, video. It's really quick, I promise.
I was in the local coffee shop early in the morning reading the Borough Forum newspaper and there was an article about wind farms in Iowa and Minnesota. To, to think that, well, what's wrong with Dr. Bodo?
I thought he was crazy. He talked about wind energy. I thought, what in the world? Next, you know, but.
You know, they can't make fun of us. They can't tell us it wasn't gonna happen. It wouldn't work.
I thought, well, we'll see what we can do with this.
I thought, well, we'll see what we can do with this. And now we're on, they went up with John De Niro, and they came to town, there's some drama, it does.
The spirit of the project was evident from the beginning. Thinking back at that first meeting, we were welcomed with open arms.
It was going to be good for not only us as a farm, but for the community, for the county, for the township, for the state. That was the beginning of a relationship that has lasted for the last twenty years.
So the Swan Lake Wind Project, here I have a map of the project boundary. It's a project up to two-hundred-and-forty, forty-eight megawatts of energy. The project boundary is sixty percent in Turner County and forty percent in Yankton County. We are planning to have up to ninety-seven wind turbines. And we plan to use GE two-point-eight megawatt turbines. And, you know, just some information about the wind turbine, the wind turbine is four-hundred-and-nine, ninety-nine feet tall, and then I say four-hundred-and-ninety-nine feet, you find the wind turbine, you know, when the blade is at the highest position, we call it the tip pipe, so that is four-hundred-and-ninety-nine feet. And just to give some other additional information, you know, you may hear, you know, rotor diameter, and things like that, so, you know, this is the rotor diameter, so that would be like four-hundred-and-seventeen feet. And the nacelle, that's the, you know, where the blades are connected, that's eighty-nine meters from the ground, so that's approximately two-hundred-and-ninety-two feet, just the, you know, if I share in the dimensions. So there are four important things that we need when, you know, we look at, when we are developing a project. One is wind resource, great area, you know, wind resource-wise, interconnection. You know, we have interconnections here, and, you know, interested landowners, we do have interested landowners who want to participate in the project. And we are also still working on, you know, signing, you know, additional landowners for the project. And one thing that I'd like to mention is that our agreements are, you know, voluntary participation, we don't play eminent domain. If a landowner wants to participate, wants to be part of the project, they can. And if they don't want to participate, they don't, so everything is voluntary. So, some of the benefits of the project, we are going to, you know, four hundred construction jobs during construction, five full-time, high-paying, quality jobs, you know, once the project in commercial operation, you know, through the life of the project. Over one-point-three million dollars in annual landowner payments annually. You know, project is efficient, reliable, and safe, and, you know, we can't go further about that. And approximately one million dollars in tax revenue per year, and vast majority of that amount stays local. Project timeline. Next Air Energy Resources, what I, one thing that I'd like to mention is, you know, Next Air Energy Resources acquired this project from an early developer late toward the end of twenty-twenty-three. And since then, we have been working on, you know, engineering and design and completing land leases. We will be working on micro-siding and surveying, you know, this year and, you know, this year and next year will be permitting. And the plan is starting construction and putting the plan in commercial operation, probably by the end of twenty-twenty-seven. So with that, one thing that I'd like to mention, we have been, you know, we have been having meetings with our, you know, landowners. We had coffee chat meetings, we had, you know, landowner meetings. And yesterday, we had a public information meeting that was open to, you know, public. We invited all the residents of, you know, Turner County and Yankton County, you know, it's placed on the paper. So the, the, you know, what we, we were available for any question that, you know, public may have. And, you know, we had a very good participation, we had over sixty people, you know, from the public who participated. And, you know, we just did over eighty questions, and, you know, we, we were there until, you know, all the questions were answered. So with that, I'd like to invite Jill. Thank you, Commissioners.
Hi, good evening Commissioners, it's Gokhan said, my name is Jill Seed, and I am the Environmental Project Manager for the proposed Swan Lake Wind Project. And I sit, pardon me, I sit on a team, the Environmental Services Team at Next Air Energy. We have about a hundred and fifty people, countrywide, in various different fields and experts and, you know, pretty much any type of environmental issue that might come up. We're very well-versed and knowledgeable and have a lot of experience to handle problems that come up. My specific job for this project is to ensure that we follow all the local, state, and federal rules for environmental permitting processes. And we do that in a way that minimizes harm and impact to the environment. And as Louis mentioned, there's many levels of compliance requirements and a lot of permitting. And it's definitely not easy to show environmental compliance and through the permitting process. It's, I don't think it should be easy, I think it should be difficult, we have to protect our resources. And I think Next Air does a great job at that. And I also feel that the regulations that are currently in place also do a really good job. And so, for example, the ordinances that the PUC require us to do, the studies that they require us to do to get it permitted and actually have an operational project are pretty substantial, and again, we do a good job at that. I'm happy to answer any specific environmental questions you might have. And in just in closing, I want to say that if, if we, Next Air as a company, were having serious harm to the environment and, you know, some of the things that have been brought up, we wouldn't be able to continue to develop projects and keep projects going, and we've been successful in doing that. So happy to answer any other specific questions you might have as it's related to environmental issues. Thank you.
What happens to the huge blades at the end of twenty years?
Oh, decommissioning. Who wants that one?
So things have progressed, Alan Claus Anderson, I'll kind of give one more comment in a second. Now with projects, these projects, they're recycled, so they salvage the most of the steel, so it's the base of steel that's recycled or reused. And then the blades themselves are now recycled. They have processed, in Kansas, we have hundreds of blades on and repowering, so new blades are putting in. They get, they kind of go basically like a chipping machine and tune into aggregate for concrete. There's other uses too, you can make products for decking, that kind of thing, composites like that.
Excuse me, what was your last name?
Anderson.
My name's Matt Johnson, I'm the Community Engagement Manager, and just wanted to add to what Alan said. Just in the last day or so, in Iowa, a new company facility opened up to recycle wind blades. And so obviously, Iowa and the Midwest have a lot of wind turbine blades. And so this company specializes in, essentially, they get parts of the wind turbine that are like the size of a car, and they have various methods that they, essentially like Alan said, chop it up, and it's like little filaments then. And it was just in the news last day or so, in the, I forget the exact newspaper, Iowa did that, but very relevant to this question, that there's companies that are specializing in this that, you know, as blades are being recycled, and there's more of them being recycled, they're, these companies are, you know, being formed, and like Alan said, the filament or like the fiberglass is being used for things like concrete and asphalt is the most typical use form.
So, next participant will be Dr. Chris Olson. Will you have Dr. Chris Olson?
I'm on the phone.
I can hear you, I'm going to get you a little closer to the microphone so everyone else can hear you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, so I'll be great for this evening. My name's Chris Olson, I have a PhD in environmental science. And I've been working in renewable energy sector for the last fifteen years. The research and dealing with these types of projects is to come up with proper lighting guidelines for things like shadow flickers and sounds, and setbacks, this is to protect all of your local residents from things like ice throw, unfortunately, it's a place to collapse or a tower to fall down, and issues like fire. So I've actually been working in South Dakota for about ten years now, at the Icewind Project, all over the Dakotas and back right across the Midwest. I was actually at the meeting last night, unfortunately, still sending that travel home today, so I appreciate you having me on the phone. I was also in attendance and have watched all twenty-one hours of the Wind Task Force meetings that the year folks have held over a couple of months. I think the Wind Task Force should be applauded for the fact that a lot of hard work and energy into those meetings. Unfortunately, I just, I just can't support the recommendations that came out yet. And I provided to you Commissioners, the reports I provided to county planning back in May, as well as presentation, we won't control that tonight, I should have questions. But ultimately, whether it's just, you know, the Yankee County already has a good ordinance in place, that you may want to make some tweaks to it. But if you were to, if you were to adopt what is the current draft that's in front of the planning officials, the planning officials looking at right now, or I'll be there next week, you would again, you would simply, it's unworkable, you would simply sterilize all of your county, and even, you know, have to set back some of the proposing and soundbuckles and that, for all ways of talking. Not just Swan, but not just Swan Lake project, it effectively wouldn't be able to build a shoreline anywhere in the county. And so when you're looking at these ordinances and if it's going to become, if they do come for county commissioners, Commissioners, I would urge you to look at setbacks, sound holes, and shadow flicker lights that are based on sound science and engineering, and also best practices across South Dakota. So the PUC has a stringent guideline, they've adopted, as well as other counties within South Dakota that already have guidelines, similar to ones that you have in Turner County as well, of course, that's your place in project. But that'll turn it over to Mr. Anderson, and, you know, happy to answer questions at the end if you can have.
Well, I'm, so I'm Alan Claus Anderson, as mentioned earlier, I'm the chair of the Pulse Energy's Energy Practice Group. On the map there, you'll see the red dots are where we have offices, and our energy practice groups works across the country on different types of energy. We actually also have traditional oil and gas, this is our renewable energy work. And then a professor at the University of Kansas School of Law where I teach renewable energy, so a lot of this is part of that. You have a packet of information that I provided to you, I tried to get it all in there because I knew we wouldn't have a lot of time as part of this. I covered a few things, I'll go briefly over the items I covered and kind of culminate with something. First part is, Chris mentioned, when we look at land use decisions and given property rights, the discussion of how your job is so key to property rights and how that is central to the formation of South Dakota and the country. As Dr. Olson mentioned, if we have a setback like that, that's not necessary for health or safety, it's a taking of the property from those individuals, so they couldn't use it for free-market enterprise, and so that's an impact to property rights. I later go ahead, you'll see, there's been, I know at least at the Wind Energy Task Force, the Fighting Commission, a lot of misinformation related to how the grid works. So certain people that'll kind of, I guess, self-study and kind of provide their thoughts on how renewable energy works within the grid. I kind of provide an explanation of how our grid, which is really an intricate, very fascinating, interesting for energy nerds like myself. But it gets into how renewable energy interplays with our grid, and is actually enormously beneficial to the robustness, reliability, and of course, market efficiency of the grid. As part of that, I kind of have to show how we're in South Dakota where we sit here today, we're part of the Southwest Power Pool, and how the markets that work, and how we balance that energy, because there's a lot of misstatements about what source of energy and how it works, they talk about baseload energy, and they'll misstate it on how it can work. I tried to give an explanation there, but I'd have to provide more comments about that, should anyone have it. I also then ultimately get into a couple of other topics. One that comes up a lot is, you know, subsidies and the price law, Christie, and what that means and how that works. I try to, try to, you know, make clear here, first, every source of energy has some form of tax benefit to it. If you want to get, oil and gas is a great example, you personally can invest oil and gas wells and have write-off in year one, about eighty-five percent plus, so there's, you know, that kind of thing exists on all sources. What I provided here, kind of, if you take a chart, which I'll show right here as well, it's the, this is what happens if we take out all the subsidies, all the sources of electricity by different types of generation. And this also gives a comparison to the difference between new generation versus operating. And when we think about the Southwest Power Pool and we think about South Dakota, there's no clean energy requirements, there's no renewable energy requirements, there's no mandates, there's no preference, it's all about economics, the free market at work. So the reason we're doing wind energy and why projects, why your utilities want those, is because of that. It's the benefits to the grid, which I addressed, but also the incredible market benefits. If you believe in the free market and you believe in, you know, letting that work, the price of wind energy in this region, particularly when we get to the wind delta South Dakota's part of, we're at the low end of that, when we see twenty-four dollars on wind energy, that's what we would, you'd expect to see in this region, so enormous benefits. I do address a couple of other things that will come up, as I do put it in here. I put the key studies on property values, you'll see a lot of people make claims on property values. As Gokhan mentioned, like South Dakota, we have, the first one in the Dakota is in North Dakota, twenty-plus years, it's a twenty-one-year-old project. There's fifteen projects operating in North Dakota, and then the four that are operating in South Dakota, it just doesn't exist, it hasn't happened. And then these studies, including the most recent one from Lawrence Berkeley Laboratory, that kind of a follow-up to a previous one from ten years ago, and it again, once again, shows there just isn't an impact, negative impact to property values. Some of the studies actually show positive impact, and that, you know, this would be my hypothesis on it, but what you see in counties that host projects, they are able to do a lot of good things that are attractive to people to go to those communities, and so they have a benefit to the overall property values. But again, somewhere, I'm happy to answer any questions on any of these topics now, or certainly, you know, sometime after if this raises anything, but maybe three times.
Thanks, Alan. So what we're going to do right now is we're going to move on, do you want to ask a question right now?
Really quick, because I have one question over down here. From what I understand on the company, your first wind farm was in nineteen ninety-eight, and I think that's on your website. Anyway, so how long, how long have, what's your oldest wind farms? Is that one still active? And how many have you actually fully decommissioned and removed in the span of your, in your company?
So the good news of most wind energy projects is, they're not, the dominant have been decommissioned because they've been good in the host communities, they've worked well, they'll repower those projects, so they'll put new equipment on and do some of that. Some of the earliest projects out in California that were in some locations that didn't work out well, those have been decommissioned. I don't know the number on those, but there's been some that have been decommissioned. Looking regionally, so I can tell you a little bit more about the numbers, you know, with Next Air specifically. So the first project in North Dakota, I think, is from twenty, what's twenty, twenty-one years ago, I think it is, the first one. Can't remember the first one in South Dakota was, but this. Yeah, twenty-one years ago. And, you know, if you kind of go down, in Kansas, the first one was in twenty oh one, so about twenty-three years ago. So you kind of go through their decades history of the region, if that helps. Yeah, a lot of, wait, you'll see the projects, and North Dakota's a great example, you kind of look at the other places. There haven't been as many decommissioned in the Midwest particularly, because they've been cited pretty well, it wasn't cited well. And it didn't agree in the host communities, so they ended up doing four projects in the county. So there's a lot of counties that have been, you know, new, new projects in the same county because they've gone well. And then you'll see places where there's been repowers, so they'll just kind of improve the equipment.
I'll add to Alan, to what Alan said, so yeah, our first project in North Dakota was like two thousand and three, and we just celebrated actually the twenty-eighth anniversary, because, you know, there's a lot of wind resource in the Dakotas, and there's, you know, a lot of interest in wind, wind projects. And so some, some states due to like wind resource, or the grid, or a lot of interest from customers, we have a lot more projects, so like, I cover like a six-state region for community engagement. And like, we have thirteen projects in Iowa, we have fifteen in North Dakota, we're constructing our sixteenth as of right now. And I think part of the reason why we've been successful is that our company often likes to, our preference is to own and operate projects. And so we want to be that good long-term partner with communities. And so we want to be that good long-term partner with communities. And when, when we have those long-term projects, essentially how they're partially, we need a customer for every project that we have and we have a long-term own purchase agreement. Essentially like electric utility or cooperative or a large commercial or industrial customer agrees to buy electricity at a certain cost that we charge them and that rate is locked in for like 25 years. And so that helps us, you know, to have the project and that's our preference. There are other companies that are, their preference is really to like develop a project, build it and sell it. We want to own and operate it and we want to be involved in local communities. I, so I help focus on the early-stage activities when projects are a little bit earlier on and then throughout the development process. And we're always trying to give it back to local communities, provide information about projects to communities. This is a little bit of a situation where we acquired the project from another company. Usually when we do our own projects, it's called greenfield projects where I'm working with the developer, you know, we go in very early, we talk with county PNC and see, you know, is this county or community interested in wind or solar, whatever it is, and, you know, talk with landowners, see if there's enough interest and such. And then it's, it's unfortunately a long, long process because of, you know, needing to connect into electrical grid. And so it's a long process. And this project is a little bit different because we acquired it from a company who was developing it for a few years. And, and so we're a little bit different in that we want to be that long-term owner of communities, whether, you know, helping sponsor events, providing donations to nonprofits, giving back to communities. There's very significant economic benefits, these projects, the direct benefits that Gokhan already touched on of jobs, landowners, tax payments. The state of South Dakota has a very specific tax formula for tax revenue that's generated from a project like this. So we don't control that formula. A portion of the money goes to the counties, organized townships. A major part of it actually goes to the school districts. And for the first five years, the school districts get the full amount and then it kind of does the step down from year six through 10. But our estimates right now is the school districts and most of, most of where we're looking for this project is in the rural school districts. Often these school districts don't have as many financial resources and we've already met with two of the school districts in the last month, you know, discussing needs that they have, whether it's, you know, longer-term projects, improving their welding, classroom welding projects and various other things that are in basic need. And so obviously the school districts are, you know, comparable to counties. But school districts get about $420,000 a year for the first five years and then it begins to step down. But in total, it's about $2.93 million over 10 years for these school districts. So the school districts do get a significant amount. Unfortunately, after year 10, the money is like equalized across all school districts in the state. There's no way for us to control that, but, you know, there is some tax revenue for the towns and the counties, but it's a very significant economic benefit for both school districts and for, they can use it for projects or their needs and such. And I did want to highlight too that when we, when our project is, you know, end of construction, it's operational, our team wants to continue to be involved in local community. So we, our, the five staff that Gokhan mentioned, these are folks that are going to live in the community, you know, their kids, grandkids, you know, will be in the local schools. So it's people who usually are pretty involved, whether it's youth athletics, you know, they volunteer at nonprofits, they're involved, you know, in the school district. Our company has designated funds for projects that are operating for like sponsorships or nonprofits. So this could be, you know, sponsoring the county fair, it could be donating to the food pantry, it could be donating money for new laptops for students. We're, our company is big on STEM, you know, where we help sponsor robotics clubs, you know, we've spent a lot on, you know, new laboratories for science kids. So we want to be involved in the community because our team members live across the country. So I live in Wisconsin, Gokhan lives, you know, local, we have folks all over the country. And I just had one to highlight, like, we want to be a good long-term partner. And as other team members said, with the current draft of ordinance, it kills the project. I mean, they're just, it's not workable and we want to be here and like, you know, we want to be a good community partner, invest in the community, help bring in tax revenue for the school districts, for the counties and so.
Okay, so any other questions from the commission? So here's what we're going to do. We're going to finish up with our regular business that, for this evening and then we'll take comments, public comments, and any questions that need to be answered of these people. I'm sure that they're going to be more than willing to answer them. So we're going to move right along right now to CMC Adventures LLC Rezone, first reading.
Apkun's requesting a rezone of a parcel due as on moderate-density rural residential district and rural transitional district to moderate-density rural residential district. Said property is legally described as lot one of Ranch One Ranch Estates in the west half of the, of section four, town to 93 north, range 56 west of Fifth Principal Meredy in Yankton County, South Dakota. E911 address is 30938436th Avenue, Yankton. They're basically proposing seven lots to be put in there and the Apkun is here if you have any questions.
So this time I would ask for a public comment on this rezone. Hearing on this is first reading, so we'll move along with this. Move on to the, I need a motion to adjourn regular session and move into board of adjustments. Second, or a motion by Dan, second by Ryan, and move into board of adjustments. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Gary?
We have two conditional use permit requests tonight. Apkun's requesting a conditional use permit to run his electrician's business out of an accessory building in low-density residential district per Article Six, Section 1609, Article 18, Section 1805, and Article 19, Section 1905. Said property is legally described as the east half of the northwest quarter excluding lot eight and excluding the south 80 feet of the north, 1,046 feet of the west, 150 feet, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Any questions? And motion? Public comment, public comment? A public comment on this CUP? Hearing on public comment is closed. Now can I get a motion?
I would move to approve the CUP board.
Motion by Wanda, second by Dan. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Gary, second one.
Second one is a state, same Apkun conditional use permit for an accessory building in low-density residential district that exceeds the maximum magnitude square footage of 4,000 square feet. Apkun wishes to build an accessory structure that is 6,000 square feet with 14-foot sidewalls for Article Six, Section 607, Article 18, Section 1805, and Article 19, Section 1905. Said property is legally described as the east half of the northwest quarter excluding lot eight, A, and excluding the south 80 feet of the north, 1,046 feet of the west, 150 feet, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Open up for public comment. Seeing hearing none. Public comment, public comment is closed. I got a motion for, to approve by Dan, second by Ryan. Further discussion?
Just like to ban this year list for investment in the county, like this up here projects.
Yes, definitely. Thanks, Dan. All in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Your motion to.
I'd move to go back into regular session.
Second. Further discussion? Wanda and Don? Further discussion, hearing done. We are back in regular session. Appoint Drainage Commission member.
Yes, we have one opening. We have two Apkuns, Frank Kralczek Jr. and Tom Bixler, who've both been serving currently on the Drainage Commission. And so we just need to choose one of the two.
I have Val, I have Val. Frank Kralczek Jr. is the Drainage Commissioner. We have two really good candidates and our, this is the pick one and let's accept that motion.
So I have a motion to appoint Frank Kralczek Jr.
We, we have to, I think.
We have to vote first. We have to vote, okay. So your vote is for Frank then Dan, right?
Yeah, and like I said, we got two really good candidates and our typical choose just two of them.
Of, of course. Yep, of course.
Thank you, Dave, for being here. Serving on that board.
Five votes for Frank.
We have five votes for Frank Kralczek. Congratulations, Frank, if you're listening.
Thank you.
Frank Kralczek will be the new Drainage Commissioner, Commission Member.
I would move to.
You don't have to make a motion. You didn't go on.
No, but not making that motion, thank you though. I'd move to approve the May 21, 2024 meeting minutes.
Motion to, by Wanda, second by Ryan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Claims.
Move to approve claims.
A motion to approve the claims by Ryan.
Aye, second.
Second by Don. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
I'd move to approve the May 2024 payroll.
Motion by Wanda to approve payroll, second by Ryan. Further discussion? Hearing seeing none, all in favor, aye. Aye. Aye, aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll get paid this, this one. Now it's time for our last public comment. And like I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we're going to have a timer on for three minutes and we're going to start with Mr. Van Durven. He got three minutes. And I have my hand roll.
According to what you're, I have seven, five minutes.
The attendance says three.
Thank you for your time. I'm Ed Van Durven from Ava and I'm County Commissioner from Bonham County. And I'm a former legislator and I'd just like to say it's a lot more fun being a county commissioner than it is a legislator because now it takes me 10 minutes to go to work instead of two and a half hours. So it does have its benefits. Plus, you don't have 104 other people to deal with for the governor. I live by north side Ava and when I sit in my living room on the north edge of town, I can see several wind towers that prevail in wind farm. And every morning I do a lung exercise, so I sit in my easy chair for about 20 minutes. Monday morning, Tuesday morning, Wednesday morning, and Thursday morning, none of these towers were turning. As we move more towards that type of energy, we're in big trouble. I went over to the substation, which is about seven miles north of Ava, to see if there are problems or something that they were working on. There wasn't. Wednesday afternoon, we came home and it was a little windy at home. They weren't turning.
They were what?
They weren't turning. And so I don't know what the problem is. I see that a lot where they're, since I see them every morning, I think to myself, is that our future supply of electricity? And I grew up on a farm and we had a windmill. We had a storage tank because you couldn't depend on wind. The customer deserves power 24/7. Wind, wind turbines don't provide that. And I realize each day it goes on the grid and someplace the wind turbine would turn. Well, that may be. What I handed out here, I kind of got interested in this, north of Ava, about seven miles prevailing the wind is, the farm is. My son had a quarter land there, or he has that, they came to him, it's in the footprint of the wind farm. They came to him, wanted him to sign an easement. Well, he read through it. And he says to me, you have, did you get to sign that? These easements lasted for 50 years and no way was he going to sign that. And so I started taking an interest in this a little bit then. And I know I don't, I've remembered in time, there's so much, I could tell you that I feel things are done so professional and taking advantage of farmers and I don't have time to go into that now. But we had a land sale three years ago, 80 acres north of Ava. I've got a map of who signed the easements. So I knew that this property had an easement on it, didn't have a tower or any wires. So I called the auctioneer and I said, do you know there's a wind easement on that property? Well, he, he thought there was and he didn't have a contact, so he, I gave him a telephone number. And the day of the sale, they handed out that sheet of paper that I gave you. I apologize, it isn't printed very good, but on the very bottom.
You have 30 seconds to wrap it up, Dan.
It says mortgage. And so I'll have to wrap this up quick. I didn't know what to do. It's a mortgage and you're obligated to loan with the bank in Canada. And I didn't know what to do, so I went down District 3 and talked to Brian. Since I know the lawyer in Minneapolis that was involved.
Shut it out, Ed.
He just likes to do this.
We're going to be here for a while, I'm sure, because there are human questions. I don't, we don't allow them to ask questions. Randy Wagner?
Hi, my name is Randy Wagner and I live here in Yankton County and I moved here to Wayne County, Nebraska. And there was a wind turbine development around my prior home and next to it, a project, the Shoals project, if you're familiar with that. The southern part of that was right by my home, totally close. But what I want to talk about is farm land values. And at the time the development came in, I thought that the wind turbines would probably increase value if you put turbines on. Because you're only going to take care of 4 acres of each turbine, the roads and everything. With the added revenue coming in and then cash right off the ground, you would be farther ahead putting your turbines in as far as gross revenue off the property. And that's changed, so I thought there wouldn't be a negative impact to farm effect. Now that we had three or four years, the land is out in the lane town and the land with no turbines on it by far, we're getting a lot more money than. be turbines short enough to operate under those large turbines, probably to capture vortices and things like that as they dissipate and come down from the larger turbines. Okay? It says rows of additional short turbines increase a project's energy output and profitability. This is a rapidly growing four-hundred-billion-dollar market. Millions of short new turbines that last almost a hundred years provide great value to current and future generations. They can produce clean, ever-cheaper electricity while doubling the use of precious land. So we're talking about money here. My question, Ellen, can you tell me what the production tax credit is today currently for megawatt?
Do you want me to...
Yeah, you can rephrase.
It's somewhere between two point five and two point eight cents per kilowatt hour.
I think it's two point eight because of the reduction act.
No, because it gets adjusted by, not because of the pressure dimension, escalation, adjusted on just the question.
Okay. Two point eight cents per kilowatt hour. Do you consider the production tax credit a subsidy?
It's a tax credit, so it has, it's a tax incentive.
The tax credit is not a subsidy. Well, you had twenty-four dollars a megawatt hour up there, and you said in the absence of subsidies. Okay. I need to know if, if that is considered here, because two point eight cents a kilowatt converts to twenty-eight dollars a megawatt, and that subsidy, in my opinion, it's a subsidy, is more than the taxpayers are contributing that you even have listed on your chart. You have twenty-four dollars a megawatt, and the production tax credit is twenty-eight. In reality, it's more than twenty-eight because twenty-four dollars is a taxable number. If you sell power for twenty-four dollars a megawatt, you pay taxes on that. You do not pay taxes on a tax credit. Taxes are a non-deductible expense, and if you get a credit on a non-deductible expense, it's analogous to tax-free money.
So, so we got three minutes and ten seconds, and we're not here tonight to discuss tax credits or things like that, so.
Thank you.
Do we have any further questions, or someone that wants to speak this evening to ask these gentlemen questions?
Evening, I'm Matt Conley. I was just curious, just a little bit kind of jumping the gun, because planning has only had me with the scent of everything over yet. So I don't know if this little bit out of order seems real hard. And I was kinda curious, I was joking with my wife on the way down, I said, it's just all about money. And that's all I've heard, money, 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 money. I heard it was fifty kilowatt hours what wind costs, and then that the government's actually paying damn much to like twenty-four to make it look real cheap. I was curious, I thought it was mandated as a power company to go up half the bond. Renewables. Okay. I'll produce more reading. Thank you.
The lady behind you, Louie, first. She raised her hand before you.
Thank you. I'm Anne Clough, I'm a resident of Yankton. And I was not familiar with the project until just staying and listening tonight. After seeing the map, is that project gonna run through Turkey Ridge? It looked like it would go through that area. And my question is, I drive that road quite often from east of eighty-one on Highway eighteen. It's one of the most scenic routes on Highway eighteen in southeast South Dakota. And I'm just concerned about the visual pollution, you know, of such a very scenic, beautiful area, if I'm right. But I just noticed it from the map, it looked like it's going to go through that area.
I can see a little bit of that.
Get closer to the, for our Apple listeners.
Wanda likes to say.
Okay. The proposed project band that you saw is just the study area. So we haven't been finalized, it's preliminary in the sense that we haven't finalized where we would like the turbines go. You know, as it is a voluntary program, it's based on which landowners wanna sign up. And so for right now, there's, I couldn't tell you exactly where the wind turbines are gonna go in relation to that road, so.
Will public have any input on that, or is it strictly up to the landowners?
There's opportunities, so through the permitting regulatory process, there's opportunity for the public to comment on things such as visual impacts. So part of the federal, so this project has a federal nexus, which means we also do a federal level of review as well. And that document that's produced is called the environmental assessment, which the Department of Energy is involved in right now, so they're gonna be producing a document, and that document will be disclosed to the public and put out for public comment. And that document has to analyze a bunch of different environmental constraints and visual impacts of one of them. So.
There will also be, so this is just information, I mean, we had one yesterday, some people here, we wanna make sure, we can give a great example, you already heard about it. There would be a sort of the required process, if an application goes in, the finding commission would also have a formal public hearing on it, where you have the option, or is that any comments for that?
I'll be quick, but there's essentially a lot of constraints that we have to operate in as well. So even if people sign up, they may not have a turbine, because we have to have environmental setbacks, setback from roads, non-precious paint landowners and such, so that greatly decreases the area of where we build.
Thank you, I'll be watching for it.
Hey, Louie, you're up.
I guess I really don't have an opinion one way or another on wind turbines. I can remember all of the heat in Minnesota twenty-five years ago, and they started putting them up in there, and I found it very relaxing to watch. But we're gonna have to have electricity from some source. Do we wanna bring coal trains into town and set up, you know, a coal-fired plant? Do we want to build nuclear reactors? This, to me, it's still in its infancy. It's sort of like the first cordless drill that came out. Like, my God, it was gonna set the world on fire, and the first ones were junk. But after they built them a while, they got a whole lot better. And I look for the same thing in this. You gotta have electricity, because I don't think anybody wants us to shut the grid down. So there's gotta be a happy medium somewhere.
Okay, anyone else got any questions for the next pair of people?
You let him speak twice, you wanna let me speak twice?
You can stand up and speak again.
Thank you.
Got more than three minutes though this time.
Well, I'd just like to finish what I handed out, where it shows where land was mortgaged. And I didn't follow up on it right away. Land that had signed an easement on, it was mortgaged to that bank in Canada. Well, I found out about it because there was a man wanting to sell his land, he'd signed an easement at that time, and he couldn't get a clear title because of that mortgage. So I went down to Brian, and District Three, and he said, I know this gal in Minneapolis and that other page just shows where, he says, I'll talk to her about it. Well, I'd been in the courthouse checking on this, well, I come in one day and registered deed, says, look what I found, what's have sent to me. And she got permission to cancel all those mortgages. And I got a sheet of paper of all those people, and if I bought eighty of them, all those mortgages got canceled. So evidently, they weren't doing something right that they did that so easy. And so now people wanna sell their land and get a free title, clear title.
Would you like to speak on that?
So I'm not actually sure exactly what we're talking about here, but we don't file mortgages on anything, so there's leases that are filed at record, so those will be public and be on the record, just like any other lease agreement. But we don't file mortgages, so there wouldn't be anything in that regard that would be filed, so I'm not sure exactly what's going there. Now, a lease does run with the land, so if it does transfer and so on, it would be part of the record, and that's just like any other lease. One thing I'll even reiterate in relation, it was interesting, and Nebraska and the property rights, that's first, I don't put it on property rights, property values, first I've heard of that, because normally I'd say with the land with a turbine, we kinda consider the people without turbines, because those have a source of revenue, so the value of the land with an additional source of revenue has always, in my experience, has always been higher. But again, these are all private leases, so it's only for people who choose to participate in projects, is what I'm talking about there. So it's a freedom of contract, freedom of choice whether they do or do not, without any domain.
What is the average lease or cost rent per wind turbine?
I don't know, but it varies, it would vary, it would vary in location.
Between what and what?
I'm not on the land leasing side, so I don't know what the number is on that.
Any of your fellow colleagues know that?
And one thing, they also, I'm not sure they're gonna talk about, you know, private contracts with people, that's kind of a personalized, it's kind of land, no landowners.
Any more questions for next pair of, from the board? Hearing none, I thank you for being here this evening and sharing the information that you have, and look forward to seeing you again in the future. Anything from you, Dan?
I don't have any.
Okay, fine, Chris. Talk to you later.
And just one last quick one, Mr. Anderson, you had a handout, and I didn't get the handout. I have it, it's in that.
It's eighty-one pages long.
Oh, that's Dr. Olson's. I have extra copies. Yeah, I'll grab it.
Yes. Yep, yes.
I would take a copy of that for data.
Yeah, now put it in your desk.
Okay, so Commissioner updates. Do we have any? Wanda, Ryan?
Next week we'll have a short, I'll be going through, walk through with our IT, we're gonna have a January efficiency plan for, between the sheriff's office and the building here. We're going to try to see, I admire some things where we can save some money and cut some services that are self-paying off, and then come up with a bigger plan for replacing a lot of our old equipment.
Okay. Don, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
I have nothing either as far as updates. Need a motion to approve, go out of regular session into executive session.
We, there's no... I don't believe we have any executive session.
Oh, okay.
But I would move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Wanda?
Second.
Second by Ryan. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all for attending.